It's not so bad. How are you doing, sir?
Well, I own plane cards in my purse when we travel and I couldn't find the card for this last trip this last weekend. And I was like, of course.
Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, February 7th, just after 2:16 PM. I'm going to call to order this study session and we'll start with a round of introductions. My name is Barb Nosworth and I'm the mayor and Jessica Buell, city councillor.
Melissa Sefmir, pro town.
Olivier Vosman, city councillor.
Backstreet city councillor.
And staff.
Jose Madrigal, city manager.
Erin Heider, city manager.
Bill Tuchel, interim city attorney.
And Tay Harmer, city clerk.
Thank you. I will start this meeting with a land acknowledgement. It represents my statement, but it's not a statement from any other individual councillor or council as a whole. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Njuju, the Dine, the Pueblo, Popi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who use and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government. It is important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before us and who, to this day, continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in acknowledging this legacy. Thank you. So today's agenda, we have a couple of things. We will start with future new business and a review of the agendas. We will move into the discussion regarding the 211 West College Drive conceptual interviews. Jose will set a stage. We'll also introduce some of the staff to come up to the table to answer it. And then when the presenters are going to present, you'll each have 30 minutes. And Bob Grogan will also be around and he will signal. He will be our timekeeper so that it is right at the 30 minutes. So that's how we'll go. I believe the DA, I believe you guys are first. I don't see anyone from the train here yet. So, or from Reynolds Ash here. So I'll be looking for that. So let's open it up to future new business.
I'll start. I sent something out last week. I went to the CAST meeting in Steamboat Springs last month. And there was a couple of items that they brought up that I wanted to see what you guys felt and if there was support for. So, and the email had gone out from CAST and we had gotten it like in December or January or something like that. So I.
What?
There's some back, there's something back.
Okay, so I resented out to you guys along with a little background. So CAST that has a housing task force, they've had it for over a year.
Year and a half.
Yeah, and they have a state legislative focus. They have been working on a bunch of different things, but one thing that is kind of concerning that is happening right now is the governor has a concept proposal coming out in terms of housing requirements, like a blanket housing requirement for all of Colorado. And their biggest concern is that they're like, they're happy that he has a focus on housing. They are happy that he's seen that there's a need for affordable housing in Colorado. But their concern is that there's no rural resort among the stakeholders that are pushing this. And then a lot of the blanket proposal that he's proposing would actually pretty negatively affect like what we're already doing. Their big focus is that we are, we know our issues. We are working on our issues, a lot of, especially a lot of the towns that where they're at, you know, talking about this at the CAF meeting. And so there was different options, like maybe instead of saying like, everyone has to do, you know, these 10 things that we can do five out of the 10 things and you pick and choose kind of what works best for your, you know, region or area. And so there's ways to modify it, I guess. And I said, Breckenridge had already sent a letter to, to the governor. And so they're encouraging municipalities to send similar like letters, just saying, hey, you know, hear this, see this. And so I did CC Eva on this as well. And so I didn't know if there was anything to add or that I'm missing or that we already took care of this and we're done. I don't, I don't know. Can I ask her to come up and say, is that okay?
Yeah, I think so, yes. But yeah, I think we're fine on the.
I do want to be clear, we're not deciding today, but the question you want to ask is you want us to look at it and we can individually sign on to it or we can sign on as any. If we think we should even write a letter or what, if there's support for that.
Hi, Eva Henson, Housing Innovation Manager. I did have a call with Housing Colorado as well yesterday. They also have a legislative task force that's monitoring this as well. They currently are not going to take a stance and kind of letting this sort of ride through for a little bit. I did get the House Housing Committee folks contact information if we wanted to do a letter to them, if council would like to do that, as well as the Senate Housing Committee. Both of those will be navigating this and providing context around what that legislation would look like. You certainly could also write a letter, including the governor, potentially. But nothing is in writing quite yet. And so it is a little uncertain on how to address the letter unless you wanted to write about the impacts it would have directly on our.
And I think that that was the big thing with CAST was like, if, if we wanted to write a letter to get ahead of it, to show the governor that we care, you know, all that stuff. So anyways, I didn't know what the support of or not.
This council, how many thoughts on response to Eva's investigation?
Well, at the last, I think it was the RHJ meeting, so many meetings. The county mentioned that they were concerned because they have a much different zoning, which they don't actually have. But they have a much different zoning than what the majority of the state of Colorado has. And so this might affect them in different ways than it would even affect us. So I know that they're concerned. They might be doing something about it as far as writing a letter. I think one of the challenges though is what Eva mentioned is I don't really know exactly what they're suggesting it. And that's one of the big challenges, like what is, say, they want to suggest inclusionary zoning? What is, how, what's their definition of that? Because it might be different than ours. And so that's where I'm a little bit challenged is I don't know exactly what's being proposed. So it makes it hard to say. I love the idea that they're trying to support housing construction in this, in the state. And maybe that's how we say it, if we want to do that. And then that as long as they're sensitive to the needs of each of their regions and areas kind of thing. I don't know. I can support something like that.
Right, I could too. The biggest thing that came, well, can I talk about the concept proposal?
Is like, are we, are you suggesting a future study session item or are you?
I'm asking a letter. I don't, I don't need a study session item. I'm asking, do we want to write a letter?
Do we make decisions like that for new business or is this something?
We, no, this is something we consider. She's raising a new business topic. In the past, we've done it. It's like the letter's presented and you can sign on to it. So if, what I can hear is that if there's, if there's interest, you certainly, you and or Eva have the potential to sign on to it. You're giving us the notice of that. And if, and write it or draft it. And then if we feel like we want to, we can do it. The question is that she's also raising is do we want to take a more active stand? And she's provided the information to us. So I don't want to go into, into much length.
No, it was basically CAST is saying that the governor's concept proposal has ADU statewide by right, multifamily LUDC changes, density parking restrictions gone or limited, and that it could ruin the like character of our town. Basically is what they're saying. And so they want us to write a letter saying we support statewide, you know, reform and changes. And we're glad you think that this is a, you know, big deal, but small municipalities should be able to.
Home rules should be able to.
Yeah, yeah. So anyways, do we support a letter or do we want to just let this go on like some other people are going and see what happens?
So I'll jump in. I support a letter if someone else is going to write it.
Yeah. I would support a letter as well.
I, I'll look at the letter.
Yeah, it depends on what the letters.
Sure. And kind of, so maybe Eva might write this, possibly?
Yes, we can take it.
Then, you know, having the language in there about allowing small municipalities and home municipalities to have local control would be helpful. There's one more thing that was brought up at the CAST meeting and I didn't, I just wanted to get your guys' opinion and if there's support for looking into it further. And I don't even know if it was, it's our call, but because it was at the CAST meeting, I don't know how else I would address it. They're having huge issues in ski towns like ours with post office issues. And I was like, Durango doesn't have any post office issues that I know of because I apparently don't get things delivered by the post office. And then once I started looking into it, apparently there is a big problem. And a lot of seniors are not getting like their medications on time and stuff. So anyways, again, I don't know the appropriate way to do this or if there's support or how, but they are getting municipalities together to try to influence the postmaster.
I think I'm looking at Jose. Let's, let's find out if there's, if there's an issue here.
Staff can do some researching out and just trying to find out what.
Is that, do we support, is that, is there support for that, I guess?
Yeah, I've given a whole bunch of letters to somewhere and something about, especially outside of city limits, people not getting their mail. Could be a bigger problem than we're aware of.
Yeah, I, I said no originally and then I started asking around and apparently it's.
So thank you. And I will remind folks that Durango will be hosting the CAST meeting in October. And those dates are different than what I had thought. So I, yeah, they have, they have the dates.
Yeah, I think I have them and I can, I'll make sure I say them during.
So yeah, that'll be a, basically all councillors on deck is the agreement to, to host that. But it also brings 60 or 70 people to town for several days. So spending money. Perfect. Other new business?
So I have something about one of our future agendas and I, I kind of gave you a heads up about it, about whether or not we would like information from city attorney Tuchel concerning what other cities have done and what's legally permissible in addressing the code of conduct and state statute violations by councillors. So that we know what options we have or, or not, you know, if we decide we want to go in that way, we may not, but what options there are and what's possible.
Wait for the, okay.
Or not, two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now, the code of conduct, discuss violations, determine if a course's action is warranted. And what are you?
Whether or not we would like to know what other cities have done when there have been code of conduct and state code violations and or what is legally permissible to address those.
I mean, I think that would be necessary to like. To see even future like progress, like working together in the future and what we can expect of each other and ourselves. That's what kind of what I am looking forward is like saying like how we work together better, how can we be more productive? How, what do other municipalities do? And so I would think that, yeah, that would be good information. I agree that I hope the discussion is around working productively together going forward. And by adding that being part of the discussion for everybody's just information solely, I guess.
I have no comments on that set point.
Okay, and I support that as well. So that'll be something, giving that, that sense of, that be added to that.
Thank you.
I'm going to jump in because, but I have two quick things. One is a reminder that we kind of took the Yoot Water Pass District IGA off the agenda because it was your first week and you were just coming on a couple of weeks ago. And that is something that we do need to resolve. So it's an IGA, it's an agreement. Or maybe it's an MOU. I'm thinking intergovernmental agreement though. I'm looking at Jared. Is it an IGA?
I think it's an IGA.
Yeah. We really need to resolve that. I'm not certain if we need a study session or we just need it as a item for a new business on the city council meeting. It is something that has been going on for some time. It could possibly be handled through a, a letter to council informing us of everything in your opinion. Or you may need to present it as something, but we do need to make some progress on that IGA. There is some sense of commitment and urgency on the part of the, this district. So.
Well, it seems to me usually with these kinds of things, staff brings us something to review and then we vote on it.
Yeah, they, they had brought it and we, we bought a couple of weeks' time. So I just reminded everyone that that needs to come back to us in the appropriate way, whether it's a study session or a discussion in a city council. Okay. And then my other one that I had is I've raised this a couple of times. I raised it at the, at the powerhouse retreat at which Jessica and Olivier and I participated. And then also when we were with the, with the county commissioners and discussing issues, particularly the senior citizens that are there. And my question is, and I think maybe it's something to think about for staff to come back to us, is do we take too narrow of a definition of recreation? Do we focus solely on being physically active or, or put so much emphasis on being physically active as recreation? That we don't view it as, some people may play pickleball and some people may play pinnacle, peanut call, you know? And that is recreation for them. And so I'm, I'm just concerned that maybe in our, in our work there, we've been a little too narrow and not as inclusionary as we might want to be. And I really think about that in. As we might want to be. And I really think about that in terms of some of the activities that were, the powerhouse does that are. Could be defined as recreation. And some of the activities that the Senior Citizen Center does that could be defined as recreation. So I wondered if there was an interest. In having staff look at that and maybe letting us know um how it's typically defined by municipalities. And if they see it, it as a possible, possibility of, of being a, a way of being more inclusive. And I wanted to get your thoughts.
Want to do this?
They might bring it back to us and just say, hey, you know, we've given this some thought and we wanted to let you know. This is what other schools or not, this is what other communities do. Or, you know, there are some things that, you know, we, we like to start thinking, particularly as you start thinking about uses of fundings for future years. What make, what might make sense?
So I would make, might say like in our um retreat that we uh coming up. Um, that if we, when we're talking about funding and uses of funding and we talk about that multi-generational, that it's in our strategic plan, like. You know, where does the money go? Like how, you know? How are we encouraging and funding multi-generational activities of all and housing and all the things like? I, I think that could be just a question I would have and can we do better? And where does that fall in the priority line? In housing parks and rep, like, you know what I mean? Like, there's, I think that there's a lot. That's my personal opinion, isn't it? I would agree.
All right. Well, thank you. I just, I wanted to bring it out to you. I had been pondering it for some time. Anything else? Okay. We will move to um. Say, um, are we bringing folks up to the table?
We, we are, uh, just to let the, just kind of set the table here. Each one of you should have a evaluation uh. Format, for lack of a better word, uh, at your, at your position or your table. Uh, this is one where we have a council and staff component. Uh, so I'll ask the four staff members who are also part of the evaluation committee, which would be Erin, Hyder, Scott Shine, Eva Henson and Jared Biggs. Uh, they will join you. I will move up to the dais so that the presenters can come and do their presentation. Uh, Bob Grogan is here. Uh, he will keep everyone on a tight timeline because of fairness. Everyone can only have thirty minutes. We can't. Really make exceptions for everyone to go over, so uh we will do so. I will ask that uh each member of the evaluation committee submit back to myself or Bob Grogan. Their completed uh rating after the interview uh by Friday. Uh, if you want to get into a sooner, you're absolutely can do that. And then we will place an item for discussion and possible action. At the next council uh agenda, assuming we get everybody's ranking in and then talk about next steps of what we possibly might be able to do uh after that.
Great, and then.
He wants to give these to you by when?
Right up.
And then um.
You can do electronically or you could just hand it in either way.
Just for clarity, uh, folks will make a presentation. And um I want to give them the full ability to get through their presentation. But this thirty minutes also includes questions from council.
Yes.
Any clarifying points. So presenters, I also want to make certain that if you take all the time, then council doesn't get to ask any questions. Um.
Question, Mayor.
Yeah.
Will there also be time for council to discuss? This and, and ask questions relating to the whole concept, not just each individual presenter? Or when are we going to have those kind of conversations?
That would be at the next step, at the next item when we place on a future agenda for the council to discuss. But the interesting part is because it's a staff and council, I want to make sure that you know that they have, it's not just a council-driven. Uh, objective that there's also a staff component, the evaluators that would also be included in that. So we would bring it at another agenda to talk about, okay, we've all went through it. Here's the rankings. And the evaluation committee can talk and discuss what they see as concepts and discussions for next steps.
Okay.
Have these uh concepts been uh shared with our community?
The. It's still a R F P proposal, sir, so it's confidential until we make a positioning for, for that, past that. So we're still in the process of evaluating proposals so they stay confidential until uh we get past that portion.
Uh, can you explain that a little bit? Because this is an important uh property for our community, so. Nobody in the community is allowed to see the concepts. We are going to discuss and get presented two of the five concepts. But uh only to a limited degree will the community see. What is being.
Well, there's two steps to this. I think if you're looking at opening it up for a. Public proposal and having that is more of an open call, that's one route. But if you remember, we chose an R F P route. In which we have purchasing policies that we've adopted and laws and ordinances that we have to abide by, which does call for confidentiality when somebody. Submits their proposal and goes through. This is a, a little bit of a different uh proposal than we normally do. Normally, this would be just a staff. Uh, staff driven and then they would make the decision at the end. Uh, because there was interest with the council, we went ahead and had the entire council go in. So we're actually involving the council in more of a, a uh process that's actually staff driven internally. So through those, we keep the proposals uh confidential until the evaluations are completed.
May I, may I also say, the fact that they're here, and this is an open meeting. Makes that information available is the written documents that you're, that you're making clear from our, our F P process. That those remain, I, at this stage, there's still a work product and not for distribution.
Yes. So is, is council still of the opinion that this process we're following i- is good for our community by having. Uh, no community involvement or access to information on the five proposals or concepts that have been. Provided. I understand we went through a process, so I'm asking council that is. Fair to our community.
No, I don't think so either. Um, we have a process. We don't know what the level following the next steps will be as far as engaging the community. So I would. I, I think the statement that there's no intention, there's no planning for community engagement is inaccurate. And at this point, I would like to proceed as we have. Um, be following our, our F P process, which we all signed confidentiality agreements. I'll remind everyone of that. Um, I know there's staffs going to be here. Bob, I'm actually going to ask you to come up here. If you wouldn't mind sitting up here, because I want people to be able to see you when, when you're giving warning. And do we need anyone else from staff up here? Jared, do you need to be up here?
Yes, Jared, Eva, Scott.
Okay, so why don't you grab this one? And then, um, if there are more people in the community that wanted to be around the table, we can make room. So please, um. So staff, our presenters that wanted to join us around the table and then we'll get started once we're ready here. Bud, Tim, who else is coming? We'll do an inter, we'll have you introduce yourself as well.
Yes, I. We're ready.
Wait a minute, we're going to just, joining us at the table, I just want to make certain you understand. We have three presenters. And I'm going to ask you to speak loudly so into the microphone so people listening can identify your voice if you would. And we'll start with you. Bye.
I'm Bud Franks, um, president of the STEAM Park Board.
I'm Fran Franks, also a partner of Franks and Associates, which is part of our presenting team. And this is Tim Walsworth, who everybody knows is head, is executive director of. Bad Business Improvement District.
Cool, okay.
One second, and now we can start with you presenting us with whatever you want. I will say that um, it's my understanding that all, and we're still not started yet, that all of, that. Uh, four counselors have reviewed the proposals and I'm not certain all counselors have reviewed the proposals. And rated them previously. So I did want to say that um the majority of councils should be familiar with what you presented.
Good.
But this is a chance to really go through all the way and make that very careful.
Good.
Now you may start.
Okay, start the clock. Um, thank you for the opportunity. It's great to see everybody. Um, Mayor, as you described that, that was our expectation coming in. So we have about a. Three to five minute presentation, just verbal to you guys. There's a handout if you, if you'd like us to leave this with you. But it hits the high points of the, the, the letter of interest that we turned in to the R F P. So I'm going to jump into it and then we're ready to do. As much Q and A as you guys would like. Um, so this project. Uh, is to develop and construct a multipurpose facility encompassing theater, conference and event center. Spaces to enhance Durango's community and creative economy. We've talked to everybody, I think, at this table about this one time. Um, or another. Um, so why is it needed? Couple of things to chew on. Um, we believe that this project meets the developing needs of our underserved and growing performing arts community. We believe it strengthens our business community and supports sustainable tourism. By targeting visiting conferences to grow shoulder season business. We think it broadens Durango's cultural attractiveness for residents and for locals or, or residents and tourists, excuse me. Um, it provides needed conference and event space for local community and government use. You know, we can probably do okay with this cast meeting. You get, you, you get something double that size and it gets hard, really hard. For, for our town. We can't, we're turning away business because we don't have the facilities for it. Um, and additionally, due to this location, this project serves as a catalyst for development. Um, on Camino del Rio and I'm, I remember the Camino del Rio Character District Plan. Um, that came out through co- community development. Um, we also state that this project realizes in alliance with many of the. The city's strategic and operating plan goals. Um. It hits on affordability and economic opportunity. It hits on enhanced livability and sense of place. And I want to call out one thing from the operating plan, three point two point one. Continue to engage, this is y'all's goal, continue to engage stakeholders on the feasibility of a performing arts and convention center. So this has been something that the council and the leadership at the city has been thinking about for, for a while. Another reason why we're excited to be here today. Um, why this site? Well, walkability is the downtown businesses. For this type of facility we're proposing keeps downtown healthy and vibrant. And the site is a gateway site to our, to our town. It really calls, in our opinion, for a significant. And a signature architectural design to befit the character of our city. Um, why will this project be financially feasible? Well, the multi-use concept, theater and event and conference space. It max, maximizes something the Franks call productive occupancy and that gets to income generation. Standalone conference centers require big subsidies, right? We, we chip away at that significantly when you combine these two operating models. Um, and then embracing the concept of shared spaces for, for staff. Uh, and, and staff, shared spaces and staff helps with sustainable financial operations. So what are some advantages of the partnership here? This is one of STEAM where the Franks are principals. Um, and all their, all their experience here. We'll tell you a little more about that in a second. Um, and bid. Um, we're local, we're dedicated to meeting Durango's need and bid, as y'all know, you should know. Was formed in nineteen ninety-seven to have a conference facility for our town. Uh, my organization fully embraces. This, this concept and we've been pushing that rock up the hill for twenty-six years now. And so again, excited for this opportunity today. Um, the Franks through their firm, Franks and Associates, they have extensive. Experience in public-private partnerships. I can't tell you how lucky we are to have them in our community and just on this team. Uh, that we have, we, we have here. They're, they're real gems for us. Um, a couple of quick examples of things they've done. They've built facilities in Tacoma, Washington, Missouri City, Texas. Um, Crested Butte, Daytona Beach, Prescott, McAllen, Texas, L A. Paducah, Kentucky, Newark, San Antonio, Las Vegas and Midland, Odessa. So all shapes and sizes, really big. And things that are more comparable um to our town right here. Um. Really, they have a lot of knowledge of specialized needs and how to develop these complicated projects and it's, it's truly. Invaluable to the success to it. And last points I want to make, um, some benefits for the community. Um, this facility would meet the current and growing needs of our vibrant creative arts community by providing new venues and patron, patronage. It helps restaurants and retail and other workforce employees by increasing their income and reducing furloughs during shoulder seasons. We know how they staff up in summer and have to let a lot of people go. Um, there's a parking garage. Parking the train is super important. And this concept includes that. And that helps the train when they're at their peak use in summer. And it helps this facility and then it helps the broader community with, with new, new parking supply. Um, it supports Fort Lewis College and their theater and hospitality programs through employment, internships and even a co-op program. And lastly, we think it also should increase shoulder season ridership on the Durango and Silverton Narrow Gauge Railroad. And so those are just some high points we wanted to hit for you guys. Anything y'all want to add or should we open it up to Q and A?
Just wanted you all to ask some questions.
We will open it up. Um, I'm going to um. Give anybody a chance. I'm going to ask you to just try to limit it to one question so we can go around and make some. Chance. And then um we'll just keep firing away. Please, who would like to go first?
So I, I want to say thank you for applying for this. I know we've, everyone, the community's been having these conversations for a long time and. And I, I was part of that at one point in time, um, the conversations. Um, so I, there's a couple of things that I. Um, I think I would need to know before I could like be, um, this might be one of my top ideas, right? It would be things like. Um, you mentioned that there are so many things about um conferences and meetings and things like that that the community would be able to do. And I would want to see um specific information regarding that. What are we missing out on? What's actually been the need? What aren't we meeting? What's the problem? And I would like to know more data around that. Um, I also would like to have more information of the evaluation, the impacts. On the communities where in comparable communities. So we're talking eighteen to thirty thousand population. Not right next door to a, not a uh suburb, suburb of an urban environment, things that are very, very close to what Durango is. What's been the impact? What are the benefits? What are the drawbacks? Um, what, how's the sales tax revenue done? Um, have businesses gone out of business? Have they come into business? I would want to have that kind of information before I could make an evaluation of like next steps if this was. A direction that you were interested in going. Um, those couple of things kind of um challenged me as well as the. It's, it's, I, I don't have a question. I just want, I, I don't have any questions. They did a fabulous report. They don't, I don't think they left much room for questions, but these are my comments. Um, I'm concerned because of the um expansion of the tourism economy and that exacerbating the challenge to our housing affordability. And I'm not sure that this project is focused enough on what the community needs and wants. Like, I would like to see. All of our residents going downtown and shopping downtown rather than bringing in tourists from outside and having them be the one shopping downtown. So I, I want to see more of a, like, how does this actually create a magnet? To bring the residents into town and make it be about our community. Um, and the other um. Economic drivers besides tourism. So those are the things that I would need to see in the future.
Yeah.
Would you like to respond in general, recognizing that you might need to collect other data?
Yes, um, at the, the stage that we are at with this project. Uh, this volunteer group that has worked since two thousand thirteen. Um, had pretty much done all we can do. Next steps, among many others, uh, would be to conduct at least a few studies that would answer a lot of those questions. And um. We call them building blocks and uh Franks and Associates building blocks. And those studies are key to understanding what these buildings do. I can tell you. That almost every facility that we're aware of in the country in similar sized communities are economic engines. Uh, they drive, they draw the populace to the downtown area. They're sited in the right place. That's a key issue. Is deciding the facilities like this. But the, the natural type of. Energy that they produce, they, they are economic engines. They provide. We actually wanted, uh, we created a conceptual model. And uh, and we did a lot of analysis of that conceptual model, including performers. Staffing models, economic impact. Um, we actually wanted economic impact in two different ways. Franks and Associates conducted a study and Donna Graves conducted a study. Franks and Associates tends to be on the conservative side. And our estimates were about twenty-one million dollars a year in economic impact from just the operations of that conceptual model. It may not be in the, that model because a partnership, a public private partnership is key to both. Partners weigh in and understand what the community needs and agree on that. Our concept may not be what that end model is. Um, Donna Graves had about thirty-one million dollar annual economic impact. Um, when it came to jobs, I think we had two hundred and forty-two annually. She had two hundred and seventy-something. When it came to construction and construction economic impact is a real tricky thing. We, we tend to be very cautious and very conservative when you're estimating that. And there are a lot of factors that go into that decision. Um, but she had estimated that the economic impact from constructional loan. Would have been about four hundred and sixty jobs and about sixty-five million dollars over the course of the three to five years it would take to develop the project. Yeah, this was all pre-COVID. Uh, we developed the project to a certain point, pre-COVID. When COVID hit, we shoved the project.
And. When it was appropriate, we took it off the shelf and dusted it off and started seeing. There was traction. But to answer your your comments specifically. The next steps of development of this project would be to commission the studies that give us the information that. You're asking.
Thank you. One of the members of our group is very knowledgeable about the tourism business and. We can. Give you more figures than you ever want to know.
Need to hear about the tourism business thing. We hear enough about.
Well, the conference, the conference thing, like what what business might we be turning away and? And I would add one final thing, Kim. Not just for tourists, the performance side of this is going to be that magnet for locals. The conference space, sure, it's going to bring people in during the week. To come to a conference in shoulder seasons, but it can also host local meetings that maybe current that have a home or one example I've always thought of. Our high school prom. Right? Things like that. And tho- those are some of those magnets that. Will draw people down here through this type of facility.
Right. I noticed that Jessica, you have a question.
Yeah, I I have a couple, but we can go around after one or whatever. Yeah. What is the difference between this performing arts space and the art center and the? Fort Lewis College. Community. Thank you. It's like, oh, no, please, thank you.
The concept that we. Have. Always developed and embraced is a real theater. A proscenium theater with a fly loft with wing space with an orchestra pit. And dressing room space. There are, there are issues now the. The Fort Lewis. Theater, for instance, has no fly loft and really can't fly scenery. So the magic of theater is missing in town. And the interesting thing is at the. Late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds on Main Street, there were two opera houses and three theaters. Two of those theaters were fully equipped and both opera houses were. And we don't really have that capability in this community now. The concert hall up at Fort Lewis is that. It's a concert hall. Does have fly space, but doesn't have wing space. DAC is. We bought our our son's first car there. And and it's that. Kind of a space that was converted. It's found theater space, so it's difficult to to work in. We're proposing a state of the art, multi-purpose. Aerial acoustic hall. It can host anything from classical chamber music to amplify.
I was also going to remind Steph that I'm going to be going around, so I.
Just that we, I want to make sure there.
Yeah, so I I did want to recognize that I, this is your opportunity as well to ask questions.
If you guys have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, go.
But I do have one. I know in your proposal, you. You have proposed kind of a lease model for financing and you identify a need to identify a bondable revenue. What sort of concepts do you have for a bondable revenue?
We talked about any number of them. We talked about sales tax. We talked about bed tax or Roger's tax for. The whole time that we've been discussing this. We've always said it would take. That a typical public private partnership. Is that the public sector brings either the land and or financing. And the private sector brings the capacity to be a not-for-profit entity that can mount a capital campaign. And also conduct ongoing fundraising activities during operations. So those are two, and I I'm sure there are probably others, but what we bring is the not-for-profit capacity to mount a capital campaign. And. And we certainly have. The background and the capacity and there are people in this community who are experienced.
Foundation grants would be, could be in that mix. Government grants, probably Jared, probably in there as well.
Other questions?
I I think another question regarding the cost. I know it says that a realistic cost can't be estimated quite yet, but based on the project, do we have a ballpark?
You know, we in two thousand eighteen had done, listen, we've done a lot of analysis. But again, we created a conceptual model that may not be what the real model itself be. So. The first next steps between the the partners would be to sit down and really, really hammer out and conduct the studies necessary to understand what. The building program, in other words, what is the, what is the facility going to be? And from that point, these are very complicated projects and very complicated buildings with a lot of systems, a lot of engineering, a lot of specialty consultants. And. The the cost analysis is an ongoing issue that you that you do from the time you start conceptual design. And I I would have to say that. At this point, given given what's happened in the construction industry over the last three years. I I think I told our team that. If I were to sit here and try to tell you what, and this is a long-term project, it's not going to happen for five years, you know, once we get it started and work through all the details. If I were to sit here and try to tell you what it would cost in five years, I'd be playing darts with Ron. You know, I think. We had a range of costs, but it was again for a conceptual project that may not be real.
Well, did you have a question?
Yeah. So. It's nice to see you guys. And I really appreciate the experience and expertise that you've been bringing to the table for years. In our community and this vision that you brought forward and thank you for that. So I feel like you you are key players behind this project. You know, key, and you've assembled a team, but with that, there's risks. And so can you kind of address how that? How that plays out? You know, you would be key instrumental players in helping this project go through if it were to go through. So. Talk to me about how that, what that looks like.
Well, yeah, the. The instant one of these projects is a go, it becomes a multi-level, multi-dimensional chess. And there are an awful lot of things that have fallen into place and an awful lot of decisions have been made. I would say that the very next step would be. To. Franks and Associates has a whole chart on building blocks and the first one is get your house in order. And that is the steam not-for-profit would be the operating entity. And the steam board would have to be reconstituted and and built around people who are good. Really good leaders and community fundraisers. The next step would be to succeed money to engage staff. And obviously. Those of us that have been involved in this for a long time would be in an oversight committee or oversight position on that board and. Oversee the operation and the development of the project. Is the way I would see this. Going forward to that answer your question.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I'm going to let you know that we have ten minutes and forty five seconds. And I'm going to jump in with a question. Um, you said it might take five years. And we're working on the issue of. Also making certain that there's, you know, addressing parking issues for the trains. I'm looking at the possibility of how that might work. But I'm also interested in your thoughts around public engagement and and determining public support. For a project like this. It is, we recognize it's an iconic piece of property. You recognize it's a city asset. As part of your process in these building blocks, how would you envision? Communicating with the you and this and if the city were your partner, communicating and getting that important feedback from the community. On their preferences.
That's a critical, critical part of developing one of these projects. We call it constituency building. Steam had a broad constituency built prior to COVID. Until the project is a go, we're really not drawn to. To make those efforts at this point. But it is a critical component of developing a project. You have to have constituency. You have to have community support. And one of the ways you do that, first of all, in a community this size, is the partners would bring in those people individually. And have meetings to explain what the concepts were, to explain what the process is going to be and. And seek feedback. Another way of doing that is one of the studies that I was talking about earlier. Would be to get that kind of feedback from the community. And it's called needs and programming study. And basically it would be to seek out information and get input and build support to the project. And there's there's public meetings, there's public presentations during design. I will say however, that. The necessity. A necessity of a capital campaign is an early quiet major fundraising. Period. Where the project is kept as quiet as possible, where it's being developed, where we're developing a lease development and grant agreement with the city so that we have a. Agreement between us. We all know what all the parties are going to be doing. That's. That's. Part of the mixed steps, but but yes, Barbara, that is a key, key component for successfully developing one of these. Another key component is the public. Capital campaign to literally are letting people bring your piggybacks down. Because every dollar a citizen gives to a capital campaign gives them ownership of the building when it's over. So that would be a big part of it.
Make my comments. First of all, thank you for presenting and providing us with your concept, not just you, but the whole team involved and. During the journey. I. I think it's definitely. Opportunity to add an asset to our community. So I am. Very excited to see that. You bring it up again over many years. Personally, I'm not sure about the location, but I think it will be. At a certain point, a very good asset to our community. Most of the questions that were asked addressed my questions. Maybe the only one that is left for me would be. And based on the projects that you have completed over time and that you have referenced in your in your concept. And what is the long-term impact for a city or community in costs for maintaining operations because? Can you share some information upfront on what is typically on your examples you provided? The cost that are going to be asked from the city, thanks, boys.
It's 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 a good question because many of these facilities are. Not as sustainable. And one of the reasons, the interesting thing is that the the original concept of steam was a was a performing arts campus. And it was a multi-use facility where the the powerhouses. We began conversations with Tim and the business community. Early on, once I became president of steam, it became very clear that there was a clear need for conference and meeting facilities. And so basically what we did was take a performing arts center. Business model and overlay a conference center business block model. And create a performer based on both of those activities. And the interesting thing, I was very interested to see how it would play out. And so. Basically, that performer showed that. In the third year of operations, it was possible for a facility with these kinds of revenues to break even. Now. Do they require subsidy costs? One of these facilities in the neighborhood of about seven hundred thousand dollars a year just through the facility. Just to maintain systems, maintain stone work, just to maintain the building. So you know, you have to find that money somewhere and and usually that's a lot of times it comes from municipal. In this case, we're we're thinking that it comes from operations for the most part. We've also got a couple of other options for some. Generating some funds for operating support. I'd like to make one one more point, Kim, back to your original question. The. Conference and meeting business in Colorado is a one billion dollar business. And we're not getting. But but a fraction of that. If we were to get one percent. To nine dollars a year in shoulders. So.
I'm going to remind folks that we have four minutes and forty five seconds, so please jump in with other questions.
And I'll try to be.
No, no way. It's your opportunity to answer this. So Jessica, I know you said some Eva, Scott.
I know you've looked at a lot of different sites, including this one in the past for this. Process. Do you have any concerns about this site? For the post-use.
Any any site like this is going to have some subterranean issues. You know that going in. Many of the sites that we built, the down through San Antonio, had all kinds of subterranean issues. The Hawks in Eastern did. So you worry about those kinds of things and forensic studies need to be conducted to really understand that. We're very well aware of the train's parking needs. And one of the concepts that we developed on this site, we felt solved those needs in a very, very good way. And we have another concept for parking that. That solves that problem. We're aware that the recent study indicated that there was no need for a parking garage, but that wasn't five years from now. And that wasn't taken into consideration that if something gets developed on this site, takes away about half the train's parking as it stands right now. Something's got to be done to solve that. It's a signature site. It is. Has been described as the most important site in the Four Corners and it's a gateway into downtown. So. There there are other issues with with terms of design, parking and access, but you you bring in professionals to solve these issues.
With with three minutes left, I still want to open up for more questions.
You talked about how the last one of the projects pre-COVID, post-COVID, there's been a lot of changes. Obviously in our economy and everything that we have going on and the impact of a project like yours. I immediately as a business owner see some. Like red flags and things that could impact our community in negative ways. You know, Kim brought up housing, which I feel it's a kind of a. You know, a project like this kind of defeats the purpose of our efforts in housing a little bit, but also staffing. Have you heard from like the Crested Butte facility or anything? We're struggling with staffing in, you know, Art Center, Fort Lewis, the Powerhouse. Like I'm nervous this facility gets built, we can't staff it. It doesn't, and it doesn't function like it should. Do you have any?
We have two minutes left.
It's a challenge and. Interestingly, these facilities are magnets for people that are interested in working in them. They're. They're unique facilities. They they provide a lot of challenges, but they provide a lot of. Satisfaction on the part of staff and they're successful. So. In terms of staffing, the theater, I would not anticipate having problems with that technical staff. In terms of staffing, service personnel or conferences and banquet, yes, that's probably going to be. Something we need to worry about.
Would you like to take? A minute and a half and address anything else that you want us to know? About about a minute and fifteen seconds, if anything else you want us to be aware of. I'm holding us to that thirty minutes.
Well, I I just I just appreciate the opportunity here. And again, the bid was born with the conference center in mind. We haven't been able to make it happen. Right? I I think it's mainly because of the subsidies. That you're asking about. And I'm not saying those those problems are just magically solved by this concept, but boy, they get a lot. Easier to deal with and my board is fully in. They've already committed. What to us is a lot of money. And the capital campaign needs we're talking about here is a small drop in the bucket, but money to put in. I've been working on it for five years and my board has empowered me to keep working on it. So I hope that resonates with you guys that the bid that is the protector of downtown and looking for what's the next opportunity. Is is saying that this is a really good concept and we'd love to. We'd love to play it out with you guys. Yeah.
Again, you know, you talk about staffing. Hopefully in five or seven years, we have, will have reached that hump and going down.
I'm going to, I'm going to cut us off at that point.
I do have, I'm glad you want to take those.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to stop anything as we're transitioning. Do know, we recognize that hundreds and thousands of hours.
We've had a hundred and three meetings, but who's counting?
So I. I recognize this as a volunteer effort and you you personally stand to gain up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for saying that too.
All right, I assume we need to stretch for a minute before we go into bringing in the next group.
Eva has excused herself for a moment.
All right, we'll wait till Eva comes back. I'm going to offer a three-minute break then. Waters.
Three fourteen.
Three fourteen.
And hold the seat.
I'm going to get us started. I'm going to get us started. I'm going to invite uh the presenters for the next proposal to come up. We'll do some introduction comments um as well before we actually set the timer. Thank you. Yeah. So um welcome Reynolds and Associates. I'm going to have you uh discuss that. We're going to also, I need to talk about confidentiality as well and what's a work product and not. So first of all, we have all agreed to a the staff and the counselors participating in this this process. Normally it would be staff driven, but all council wanted to be involved in this. So we agreed to a confidentiality statement and process. I believe those were all collected, correct? So um which really lays out very specific things about uh what we can and cannot discuss. We as uh the city manager explained, I'm not going to jump on, I don't get it quite right. Um the fact that we're here obviously is a public discussion, but the proposals that were presented right now still remain a work product. That also, this is here for us to for council to gather information, to get a sense from this, to discuss it and get questions answered. At some point, we will also, as Jose said, we'll be bringing it back. We'll we'll be each of us providing a rating and evaluation. There will also at some point, as I understand it, Jose, there will be community engagement around these ideas. So I mean, that's not specifically defined, but I do want to be that be very clear. So um in that regard, uh wait, once we do the introductions of yourself, so that folks listening can identify your voices, we'll turn on the clock. And um you'll have thirty minutes and you'll see Pop it or myself kind of signaling to make certain. It's really up to you. I also you should know that um I believe four of the counselors, I'm not certain of the fifth, but at least four counselors have all read and participated in this evaluation process of the proposal. So we are familiar with the document you submitted and then the the staff that are participating here. So we have read it and evaluated it as part of this work this process. Um so I think it's safe to assume we've read the material. It's up to you how you want to present. So you can take us through something. You can give a small, a brief summary and allow more time for questions. But our entire, we'll try to make certain that everyone around this table has an opportunity to ask a question within that timeframe if they have one. So I wanted just to kind of lay that out for you. On that note, can we start um with introductions, just of the three of you, please?
I'm Jeff Johnson, general manager of the Deringling Railroad. Uh John Harper, the chief operating officer of the railroad.
Tracy Reynolds, Reynolds Action Associates Architects.
Great. Now you, and that note, we'll start and you let us know how you want to proceed.
So I'll let these guys do most of the talking, but I'll just kind of kick off here. So if you want to talk about a city parking garage, we are more than happy to do that today. But um after we submitted our proposal, the part of the study came out and said, well, we don't need a downtown parking garage. So we have reformatted our proposal. And we have taken out parking garage that the city would have owned in our original proposal. Instead, we have uh taken the building that we already had designed, kept the whole design intact, except the back wing condo hotel rooms got lifted out of the level and we added two levels of parking. And so this this new submittal, we would provide adequate parking for the new development on the ground floor, and then we would have two levels of parking that would take care of the parking that's lost uh for the train. So that's a quick summary. We can run through this this handout and please guys can jump in and talk because my voice is fading.
Yeah, so the most updated version is actually this one right here, which you guys should just have received. And if you don't hear, use an extra copy. And so, um yeah, just to kind of like extend a little bit on what Tracy had just mentioned, you know, it was interesting because we had first um came to conclusion with the first proposal that, you know what, we need a parking lot not only for the railroad, but for the development side as well as for the city. You know, there there's been this, you know, it it might be, uh it might be a little bit of folklore now, but we need more parking. So then there's grand design of a fourth party parking garage and all this fantastic condos and commercial space. And uh really some special uh some special event space too. And then the study came out and said, we don't need parking. It's like, well, let's go and take this back and let's look at, you know, a different rendition, you know, I mean, what's applicable to what we need today, right? And ever since the
Interrupt just for a second. I'm going to pause this just for a second. Um so you originally submitted a proposal and it was evaluated by staff and council. So everything is being evaluated for what you proposed already. So what you're bringing up today is I'm trying to think.
It's not something we reviewed.
Not something that's considered or considered correct.
It's not a part of the process.
It's not part of the process and we have a strict guidelines on how we handle RFP. RFP, so I am concerned, uh while I appreciate your being responsive and flexible, I have concerns that we may be out of bounds.
I see you looking over in my direction, Mayor. This comes as a surprise to me too.
Yes, we're all surprised.
And I had not um uh uh I admit, I have not gone into your purchasing policies in detail, but it it does feel like you were comparing two different apples before and now you're being asked to compare an apple to an orange. Uh and that that is outside the scope of what you're you're looking at. I don't have a great suggestion as to uh how to uh deal with that.
I I'm going to make a suggestion.
Yeah, okay.
Let me say that because we have um very, uh as you may know, people are always looking for us to be out of bounds. And I am not interested in that at all. And so this is not as I said, this is not what we reviewed and rated, and so it was not the invitation. I appreciate though flexibility. I'm going to look to our attorney and a city manager and I'm going to suggest that possibly we stop this meeting and find a way to reconvene at appropriate time after people have been able to review the material, the evaluators. And have you then possibly come back and present? I'm trying to.
I guess my, one of my concerns, Mayor, is my understanding is you had other proposers as well and you have narrowed the field to two based upon the original proposals. And that if the other four proposers were given an opportunity to revamp, um they might feel, you know, slighted if if you didn't give them the same opportunity. And that's why I have a serious concern about you know, with any proposal, it's a request for proposals. It's not a contract. Um there's going to be some tweaking along the way as people ask questions about, you know, what would you do this? How would you do that? What are you going to do for parking? How would finance it? What kind of contribution to the city? Those issues are going to come up with any proposal. But my biggest concern is that you had six people or or six proposers and one of them is now in with something that doesn't look like what you evaluated that got them to this cut. And I I'm concerned that if you move ahead and evaluate only the new proposal, other people would have legitimate reason to complain that the process wasn't fair. So I don't know how to make it fair, but I'm just saying I I I do agree that it doesn't seem fair at the moment.
Council Baxter.
Um so I don't think that the lack of parking garage changes the core of this proposal. I think the core of the proposal is still the condominiums. And so I don't, I I think that the value might come in the conversation about that aspect of it. Um and then to be um the rest of it figured out later, but it doesn't change the core of the presentation.
And who?
Does it or doesn't?
I'm I'm you know what? I'm actually comfortable to talk about the original proposal and we'll go from there. If we just want to kind of stay focused on the original proposal and you're aware of it, great, and we can just keep going. So the original proposal, if you want to talk about the parking garage and the original development for the corner, we can.
A moment, please. I'm I'm because I am I I I hope you can appreciate my uh concern about the city not being, any litigation brought against us in a process like this. And I hope you can appreciate that. And so uh my my issue is to err on the side of making uh of of addressing any potential issues, which I'm going to go back to the city attorney and say then, and we may have an opinion that this doesn't change the core. But we also know that the proposal has changed. And so I want to see if there's merit in giving us time to read, to look at the options, what has transpired and what might be our best way forward. Not necessarily today, uh but for being fair to all proposal, the people who submitted a proposal.
I Okay, I appreciate um council member Baxter's comments that essentially you're being asked to compare a a convention arts entertainment center with a hotel retail uh condo or condominium development. Uh and that there's merit in in exploring that. I also know you've got sort of a series of ratings criteria that were geared up to that won't really fit if you're thinking about something different. The shorter answer to your question is I don't believe that there's anything that would prohibit you from taking a timeout from deciding how you would be willing to entertain the applicant's presentation and what you want to do next. And by timeout, if you mean another meeting, yeah, I don't know that we're going to get it solved today. Uh you could also, I think, move ahead as council member Baxter suggested and and hear the merits of a housing proposal, but I I know that in the back of your mind, you're saying, but it's not really exactly what they're thinking about.
But the last presenters even said like, we don't, we can't give you a cost because we don't know exactly what's going to go in here. And it could be community space and it could be, right? Like they were giving us options too. And so I'm just saying that if.
Understood. And and that's why, because it's a request proposal and not someone who's bid on the particulars of a contract with uh specific details and different options or potential addendums. It's it's a little bit different, but I also understand that, you know, the applicant led today with a, hey, we've changed what we've showed you before. Um and that's a I I'm I I have, will not back away from my position that there might be four other people who said, well, if we had a second chance, you know, we might do something different too.
I'd like to hear from council and staff with thoughts on either postponing this, giving us time to think, look at the possible legal ramifications and options of what might be appropriate for others or proceeding, recognizing that it is comparing a basically a hotel high end condo space with a performing arts and meeting space.
I don't feel like we're comparing the two together. Personally, I feel like we're evaluating the benefits and drawbacks of each proposal individually. So I'm not, I'm not compared. I just want you to know, I'm not comparing the two against each other.
Perfect. I'd like to hear that from others.
I'm I think we're following a very strict RFP process and I I think uh I think the point raised is very valid. If we start off with a different concept, then it would be worthwhile at least looking at the concept beforehand and then have a better prepared answering question session. And besides the legal ramifications for the other people entities that submitted a bid. I also don't know how this proceeds because it's not just council, it's council and staff that is involved in this. So is this a vote or is this a?
I'm seeking an opinion. I'm not seeking a vote. I'm just trying to get a sense of if, is there a consensus around going forward with a potential risk to the city? Taking some time to evaluate if there's any risk.
If I could.
Please.
Could I have like three to five minute just discussions filled? I think just from a standpoint of we're kind of caught
Yes, you are.
A little off guard on this and just so that it may help us just kind of getting familiar with where we're at. Maybe get back with maybe a staff suggestion.
Sure, sure. You need five minute uh reconvene.
Would you give us five minutes, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make that. All right, you're welcome. So city manager and city attorney, I love seeing you sitting there in terms of the attorney. Jose and Bill, please share with us, provide us with your counsel.
So I'll just talk, just as the, the general decision and then obviously Bill's here, if there's any questions that go through it, but after we talked about it, we think it's in the best interest right now to just do a, a timeout, a pause and a postpone it. Postponement, let us discuss a little bit more in looking at how to mitigate the risk and how to see what we can do as avenues to continue with this process. But there is some concerns that there might be some risk with the beginning of this, of the proposal started. Bills or anything?
I agree with Mr. Madigal's assessment that we're looking to both manage risk and to be fair to all of the applicants. Those who have here today and those who have presented in the past and give us an opportunity to assess how best to accomplish both of those objectives. I, I recognize it provides some delay in the process that you have been looking to move forward. But sometimes smart delay is the best idea.
Counselor and staff, any thoughts on that? This is their recommendation. I support it, their recommendation, but if there's any differing views or anything that one that needs to say something, please do. So we will look at, I'm going to come back, will, you will take some time to assess the, to assess the risk, to come back with a proposed plan for addressing that risk, mitigating it, which may involve anything from changing the you could, I, you, you'll tell me.
We don't know yet. And that's why we need some time to figure out how to best accomplish that.
All right. And then you'll come back and put it on a study session for us or a process for us to review.
We'll update the council and.
You'll update the council.
And the evaluation.
All right.
Question, okay, Indiana, do you want our first evaluation sheets?
Could you pass back in the evaluation sheets and the materials that you provided today?
And did you want the completed ones from?
The prior one?
Yeah.
The prior one, did they have to turn that, they hold that on?
Why don't you hold that on as part of your confidentiality? But the materials that were submitted today in an open meeting are probably with record.
My question of you is, of the two of you is, excuse me, I just want to compare with staff or with counselor. My question is, if you can come back and recommend that parking is no longer necessary as part of the discussion of this RFP, then even what we may have heard would be inconsistent. So is there a potential even change the RFP?
I, which I think we just need to have a conversation. There's just so many what ifs that I don't think I'm prepared to answer without having a really good.
And I'm not either. I said this one. Mr. Madigal and I have been doing this a long time. This is coming out a little bit out of left.
Sure. All right. Any other questions before I, I dismiss this part of the study session? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you again.
We, I have taken some breaks, so I'm not going to take another one. Okay. We have everyone here for the study session on boards and commissions. Take it or I'd like a recap of the process leading up to today's discussion, if you wave a line.
Uh, I think I'm just going to go ahead and hand it to Erin because I just asked her and she has that timeline in her presentation. So I didn't want to do it twice, but this is just kind of the continuing discussion that we've had that kind of precipitated at the retreat last year. And Scott and Erin here are here to present and talk a little bit about a reorganization. It's a possible proposal for boards and commissions.
So before we get started, we have one hour. And I'm assuming you want to take it through your full, your full presentation. And then allow significant time for council comments.
That'd be great. If Scott and I, if we could get you the whole presentation and then answer any questions in the cloud to help guide your discussion. Happy to do that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Still feel really far. Okay. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Erin Peter. Here and Scott Dye, we both director. We're happy to, and we look forward to hearing the team's presentations today. Although Scott and I are up here with the presentation and we're here to answer the questions. This really has been a truly a cross departmental team approach working on this project. And I was, I was going through trying to list everybody that participated in this project, responding to your request. And then I realized in fear of leaving anybody out, I just recognized that just just about every department in the organization has two members that participate. That's been great. So let's see here. Okay. And so to start from the, really the timeline of, we can give a little bit of background.
Sorry, I'm sorry. One second. And the space.
So, so today's presentation is really building upon, first off, it's the, the project started almost about a year ago with the council retreat and a request to, a general request to review the boards and commission structure. And if we were going to reorganize that, what would that look like? So July 2022, there was an initial discussion providing the interdepartmental committees, initial discussion with proposal, what kind of move forward, get that feedback. In October 2022, once again, the team presented another discussion with more detail. And today's presentation is really the building upon all of that feedback that had been provided by council from the, from the two previous discussions that we had. You know, after the October presentation, staff really reflected on back to the initial request of if we were going to start or institutions from scratch, what would it look like? And how would it feel? And even though our initial discussions that we presented to council over time really focus on the structure, we've continued to refine that structure through these conversations. But we really felt it was necessary to expand our consideration, our recommendation to the key components that have the biggest impact and functionality in effectiveness on the boards and commissions as to their role as advisory to council. In addition to the time that we spent since October, we spent a lot of time investigating and learning what other high performing municipalities, how they structure and function their boards and commissions. That's been a great complimentary piece of our work to really reach out to our partners and the cohorts and really learn how those municipalities also use that function to see what we can learn from that. So with that, you know, staff identified key goals to best guide the boards and commission reorganization while supporting his council's focus and desire to invite community interaction effectively, improve customer service and overall enhance the organization's platform. What we, we really, I don't know if goals is the right term, but really this is our lens that we use to guide through what would our structure and the support system related to boards and commissions look like if we remove the redundancies and increase efficient rates. And in our conversation, this range anywhere from identifying where discussions are duplicated across, like a similar discussions duplicated across multiple boards. Anything from those discussions to how we, how reporting comes out of boards and commissions to council. Number two, if we retain and enhance the high level of customer service, ensure transparency and not only allow for adequate public input, but also be invite more community engagement around through, through our, through our processes. Number three, lessen our unnecessary administrative costs and burden. While still balancing the sufficient public involvement and decision-making. Number four, establish more clarity for the public regarding the processes involved in project reviews, product evaluations and decision-making that impact the services we provide in our community. And finally, ensure that the volunteer time provided by the members that participate in our boards and commissions is optimized to make sure that the time that they're volunteering, they feel like their contributions are valued and meaningful. So that was really our lens as we were, as we were working through this refinement. So if we start with our current boards and commissions, this is our current structure. And this really is a quick visualization of what the structure looks like. If I can highlight a couple of the back of the baseball card stat up there in the right, we're starting at 23 boards, 123 members, the equivalent of approximately 5,500 staff hours. And that would be spent in evaluating the 2022 hours spent that equates approximately 313,000 staff dollars that are spent supporting boards and commissions in approximately 429 hours. So those hours, just to note are calculated purely on the hours related to the appointment process and then meeting attendance, not necessarily the time that you all put in preparing for, for the meetings. Now, before we moved into the proposed structure, I want to point out that the proposal is addressed in two different parts. The first part is going to be the structure. It's going to look similar in nature to this. And then the second part is really three key components that support the overall effectiveness to the boards and commissions. So there's the what, and then there's the how. And so we're going to break that up and we'll go into more detail. So here is our proposed boards and commissions. Once again, a quick visualization, like I said, we'll go into more detail in subsequent slide. If I can draw your attention here to first off, the color coding, the key that we have here. The yellow backgrounds on here are boards that will be sunsetting or built phase out potentially based on future action. The pink backgrounds are boards that will be transitioned in some way, either maybe they're new, they're a new version, or we have some recommended changes to them, to where we're starting from currently. And then the green background, their, their board that will remain unchanged. You'll also see there's a number of boards that are not listed on the structure and we'll go into those also. The one thing I'll point out, we'll come back to this here in a second when we go into more detail, but there are six boards that, six identified boards with council liaison roles identified attached to those boards. So you can see those identified on there. So you can see those identified on there with the, the green label. And then once again, the, the stats associated with this with that, the group proposed structure leads us to 15 boards, 78 members, about 1,500 staff hours, which is the equivalent of $85,000 in staff time and 83 councilor hours. So you can see I'll kind of flip back and forth maybe real quick. Um, the biggest change there is really in the staff hours from 5,500 to 1,500 counselor hours is almost 430 to approximately 83. And while maintaining a good majority of the community members are participating on the.
Good afternoon, councilors. So Erin did a great job covering the history and the goals of the process. What we use to kind of think through how best propose a potential reconfiguration. And then getting into the structure, I'm going to dig in a little bit more to the resulting boards that would come out of a reconfiguration like this, especially those first two. I'll try and hit the high points so that we have plenty of time at the end to ask questions. But I'll just mainly focus on those first two. The financial advisory board really tries to hone in on one key aspect of why advisory boards were created in the first place. And, and that's really around the ballot initiatives that require recommendations from an advisory board to council for how to use those revenues. And that was really a driving force. And I understand how many of these advisory boards got started. And then there were these other layers added on to the advisory board role about project discussions or policy decisions or recommendations on other things. But really what we're proposing is to get at the heart of why those advisory boards exist in the first place and do that in a collaborative and cross functional way that, that sort of integrates all of those recommendations across different sales tax revenue sources and, and capital improvement initiatives and it brings it into one consolidated proposal. So that would be merging five current boards into this one financial advisory board. That has had a number of different acronyms as we've talked about what it looks like. It can be a financial oversight committee. That acronym didn't play that well. So, uh, financial advisory board is what we're proposing right now. And like I said, we want to understand that what's required by ballot initiatives, this board can meet that first to make sure we're complying with the terms of those ballot initiatives. And then we'll come back and we'll talk later about that other role that they've gotten into as far as policy initiatives, project specific, public engagement, those types of things. How we're proposing to accommodate that and make sure that they're still adequate community involvement in decision making. So that's, I'll now leave the financial advisory for that. The second piece, the planning and design commission is really focused on the quasi judicial boards. Uh, mainly this community development department administers. So community development administers six different boards right now. Uh, this proposal would consolidate all of those boards into one planning and design commission. So it would take planning commission, designer, and the board of adjustments and merge them into one commission. We can talk about the structure and what we're proposing there, but it would be a seven member commission that would have some qualifications about experience for being on a board and have experience in architecture, design, land use types of issues. Uh, and, and the one goal that this really touches on is getting better clarity for the public and for our customers about the process. And we've had, it comes back straight. We remember it's time to reboard planning commission. That interplace sometimes really confusing, there's overlap. Uh, there's multiple rounds of reviews and even, you know, staff gets frustrated by that. Customers get frustrated by that. And so we think this really gets at while still ensuring good review of project and the application of our standards, it gets at a more understandable and clear process. Uh, I'm excited to be able to say that we, we presented this proposal to our code alignment working group, which includes members of the board of adjustments, planning commission and design review board. And they agree with the idea of this, that suggestions aren't logistics of it. But overall, this idea that makes sense, we think we can better organize how we review projects and get them through our system. So those are really two key recommendations. High impact, I'd say. These other two, the mayor, my act, the mayor's chief advisory commission have not been involved in personally a lot. But I think there's some recognition that that needs to be revisited and sort of a better understanding of their role and how to engage youth in local government more effectively. And then the regional DEIB council is a sort of current conversation. We just had that conversation with the N R board last week. Uh, but realizing that those issues are really more regional in nature. Want to involve more of the community in those instead of just the city appointed commission. So the idea is to continue pursuing that and setting that up as a partnership between multiple community organizations. Obviously, we can come back to these during more details. Ask a question. So that's the.
Thanks, Scott. So the, the next group that we want to talk about are those that were highlighted yellow on the structure. So these are the boards that, um, potentially will be phased out in the future actions. So the library advisory board, so that would be dependent on the work that as we work through the, the district. Um, and potentially that board, well, as a city board may not no longer be necessary, but we transitioned to something else. The creative economy commission that would either solve or be absorbed into the dream of creative district. Um, the election commission is a board established to monitor in person like election, like voting locations. Um, and we don't have that anymore. And this, so that can be changed through a charter action. Um, and then both the police officer and the firefighters will hire pension. Um, you know, these two will remain until there's no longer a membership to support. Eventually, that will, that was will fade, fade out. We wouldn't really highlight some of the boards or all the boards that are not currently listed on the proposal. So, um, the first one on here is the local licensing authority. So this would shift from being a, um, identified board and commission to instead moving them, it would go through administrative review. Um, in partnership and it would be a work with the city manager and the city clerk. Uh, I actually think the administrative time to support that board of commission might take longer than the average license meeting that happens on occasion. Um, there, there is an area here, I believe, infrastructure advisory should be listed up above the parks and recreation, natural lands. Advisory board. So as Scott spoke, those would be combined, the financial related duties would be combined into the financial advisory board. And then planning commission, time review and board of adjustment. So that as Scott spoke, all roll into the planning and time commission. Community relations commission, Scott spoke on this also, the, the city focused, the solely city focused commission would, you know, as the proposal for the regional DEIB council. And the strategy among finance advisory board has effectively, or you know, pretty closely committed its initial mission when it was set up. And any outstanding duties that the board is currently addressing would be rolled into the financial advisory board. Um, let's see. So, uh, the, the next three slides and here in the next three parts focus on, are primarily focused on enhancing the engagement of and with the boards and commissions, but also address efficient base with the one goal of really increasing councils confidence that the boards are functioning well and serving their advisory purpose. So the next three pieces that we'll talk about are the council liaison role, the reporting process, and then the appointment process. Uh, what I do want to point out is in the agenda packet, staff, we did highlight all the different several options that we considered for each of these items. What we're presenting today is really the proposed, um, recommendate, uh, recommendation moving forward. So the proposed council liaison role shift is really shifting the council liaison role from being an active member of the board to, uh, first off, the council liaison would be assigned to the identified boards. So similar to now, however, the number of boards, as you could see earlier, there were six boards total in the proposed structure. Um, attendance becomes optional to go to the boards and commission meetings, but, um, and attendance is optional, but is passive in nature. So really a listener and able to provide feedback when requested. Um, and really the primary role for that council liaison is be a primary contact for that, for that board as like as a. So the three that remains that are, have required, um, participants are remain the mayor's, the mayor's youth advisory commission, B R A, and then the pension, pension boards. So we can go back to the picture later on, if you'd like to see which ones of those that staff recommends has an identified council liaison. The next piece is the proposed reporting out process. So once again, this is a, we think a way to shift the current administrative role of the council liaison piece with the participating or the role and the support for the boards and commission. Um, where it becomes, um, that staff generates a meeting summary, which is the, when, when applicable, um, that then the chair approves and then is included in the regular council packets. Um, all board minutes are then published to the website. This is happening, but could probably benefit from a more consistent approach and regular approach from all of our boards and missions. And then because the summaries are included in regular council packets, council can still discuss specific items that are presented in the packet as desired during a identified board of commission review of the item. So there's still engagement, conversation regarding the activities of the board's missions. And then finally, the proposed interview and appointment process. Uh, we, as you all probably believe too, the appointment process is, is really a critical piece of the overall board and commission functionality. And it's a really a key opportunity to ensure that our, are sure that our boards and commissions are aligned with council prior, priorities. And by creating quality, by creating and spending quality time with each applicant. So in this process, our recommendation is not necessarily to reduce the time spent overall in the appointment process, but instead focus on shifting how we spend time. So, uh, in this process that we're recommending is there would be for each board, there would be an interview team identified. Um, and that interview team would consist of the liaison and the ones. So let's talk about the ones that have an identified liaison, one other counselor, and then the board chair. Um, what this does then is allow, it opens up some more flexibility around scheduling piece around the interviewing for that process. And the boards where there wasn't an identified council liaison, instead of, it would just be two counselors, not necessarily the one that's identified to that, to that board. The interview team then provides, completes all the interviews for that board, then comes with a final recommendation to that board that rolls up with all the other recommendations from the other interview team. And then is presented at a council meeting for a council to appoint all the members via regular council meeting. And then that would, the same thing would be applicable during like a mid cycle opportunity when we have vacancies come up here in the middle of the year. It would still be the same interview team that could get together by the time to interview the applicants instead of requiring a full council.
Great. So there were a lot of staff discussions on this, a lot of meetings and sort of discussions on everything from the role logistics that we just went over to kind of more philosophical about, you know, what is effective community engagement? How do we best involve the community in decision making and policy initiatives, project reviews? Um, so it was, it was really exciting sort of a team effort. And we realized that like I heard too earlier, the advisory boards have taken on a large portion of public engagement efforts. They are serving as sort of a conduit for some citizen concerns, but is that really representative of the broader community to have those boards with, you know, specific interests and ideas about them and bringing those recommendations forward? So really relying on this is we wanted to make sure that our public engagement was representative of the community. Um, and make sure that there were still those conduits to, to collect that, to ideas and that information. So we started to talk about what is the new vision, how we re-envision public engagement? If, if we go this route, we don't have the, what's become sort of the fact of the way through the advisory boards. One thing that's clear is we can probably expect more direct council conversation, not conversations, but comments at, at council meetings. More people will take advantage of that and, and see that as the way that they can get directly to the elected officials instead of having to go through the advisory board. So that's just kind of an expectation to be prepared for that, that may occur. Uh, the revised appointment process like, like Erin summarized is a way to make sure that those boards that do remain are representative of the community. What I heard observed, your appointment process is ninety second or two minute sort of conversation. You're like, okay, the person's not crazy. They can serve this role. Um, and now you're, there's going to be more times and what, what is their interest, what's their experience in these types of things? Is there a community they're representing or a stakeholder group who have a better understanding of who's on the boards and commissions in time to, to kind of assess that out. We also envisioned increased project specific public engagement meetings. So instead of a project in the transportation department maybe that would have gone through a multimodal advisory board. And usually they also have a project meeting, they wouldn't do those two things necessarily. They would have project specific engagement, you know, along with meetings, surveys, virtual forums, other tools that they're using to get public engagement around specific questions. Instead of an advisory board just meeting and kind of drumming out, oh, I think we should look into this or this. It's more focused on the actual work that's being done and on the feedback that we need to advance a project. And then this last idea, I think still needs a little bit formulation, but it would most likely be quarterly, monthly, quarterly forum where the community has direct access to city manager's office and department directors to bridge, not, not very structured setting, but just a way for them to bring forward to that executive leadership team, issues that they're concerned about, policy ideas, questions, those types of things.
And Scott, if I may, just to tag along onto that, I think the, the goal was to really have that direct conversation. Uh, when you go to a three minute, uh, public or public comment at a board meeting, it's you say it and then we always get that there's, then there's nothing. And being able to have this community engagement forum with the directors and myself, I think lends itself to being able to have that conversation, assuming it doesn't go like an hour and dominates the entire part. But you know how powerful it is to be able to have your question, ask your question, have a response from a director and a director being able to either address those concerns or say, yeah, absolutely, that might be something we haven't seen. And then we would look at taking the information from those community forums and taking it to council meetings and operational updates and letting them know, here's what we're hearing. Kind of group them into terms, things we're able to address, some things that may need policy revision, which we'd bring back to you. So really kind of having this community forum where people could come and not have to wait for that. Do I get a response? How does this work? But be able to have that conversation directly.
So this just gives an overview, kind of next steps, obviously based on council direction. Here we go from here, we lay out the things that need to be done to implement a program like this. Here we go from here, we lay out the things that need to be done to implement a program like this. The clerk's office adjusted appointments for boards and commissions back to May this year. So that's coming up, so the timing could work really well. That's the full direction, we can start implementing some of these things in the year this year. Some are more involved, like the positive judicial work require a meeting code, some of the other boards or commissions require meeting code amendments and amendments to the land use and development code. Just an example, the board of adjustment is actually called out on charter is something that needs to exist. So we need to make sure that how we structure this new entity complies with that. I'm confident that that can be done, it's just it's going to take some work and legal counsel on how we set that up. But overall, I think it's been, it's been a really stimulated process to think through where this came from, why we are where we are. But then we line this aspect of the organization to to mean sort of our overall performance and customer service and community engagement. So it's been a fun process and toward the year in the past.
And that is the end? I'm going to open up for questions, but let me just first acknowledge my thank you to you guys, to the entire staff, to the people that worked on this and the leadership. It's been over a year that you've been involved in this and had numerous discussions, bringing it to people. So we tasked you a year ago to come back. And I think that you have done what we asked of you, come back with the suggested possibilities. So I want to recognize the added work this was to all of your schedules. And I think it's it's in the spirit of being responsive to council direction. Thank you. I want to recognize that. Open it up. We have about up to half an hour of questions if if we need that much time. So. Or thoughts, questions or thoughts, it doesn't have to be.
I think it's been, this is a major undertaking you guys did. And I love that you sat back and looked at it from what makes things more effective. And and for me, what effective means is that the community's voice is heard, it's done in a financially responsible way and in an efficient process. So I'm really, I'm really pleased with that. I think we've got a couple of different types of boards here that we were actually talking about. So that's part of the confusing part in some ways, if you will. For me, I see your recommendations like the planning and design commission, so the three board. That seems to me like perfect, no problem with that. It makes perfect sense. Having been on the planning commission, I understand why that all works. The library advisory board, if we go with the district, obviously the district itself would have their own board to get that. Creative economy makes sense to me. I agree, the mayor's youth advisory commission really was originally designed to get youth more involved in in government. And the way it's functioning now is they're doing some really interesting work and some really interesting things, but they're not involved in the government aspect of it. So I do think going back to some sort of board interaction type of thing with them makes perfect sense. Let's see, the election commission, that would make sense. The old higher fire makes sense to me. The CRC being adjusted to actually being a community-wide and possibly even region-wide D E I engagement process, I think is fabulous because, you know, we can change one little entity all we want, but if we don't change the big picture, it's not going to help a whole lot of people. So I really, really support that. And I don't know if I'm missing any others that are outside the ones that I kind of want to talk about. But I, oh, so the board of ethics, we had a meeting with them and they made some recommendations for how they would like to see that change. Council agreed with that and it hasn't gone through the process yet just because of our legal department changes. So I see that coming up in the future. But I'm a little bit not settled to quite understand how the Parks and Rec or natural lines board, multimodal board, infrastructure advisory board, and the financial advisory board structure work. So for me, everything else is pretty clear. I'm like, yeah, go for it. But this one, I'd like us to talk about a little bit more about like on the ground, how does this actually work?
For practical purposes, do I have similar coaches? Can can every council, if you want, and go through the majority of them and then leave the box and let them know?
I think that, I think that's
Shall I go?
I support what Kim said with the other boards as well. First, thank you. What an undertaking. And I love how every single department worked together. And I think that says a lot for Jose's leadership and what has been implemented over the last, you know, few years here and how you guys are really coming together. So I just want to note that first. I think that the planning and design, that whole board makes, I love streamlining it. And I think it's understandable, it's a clear process. When you come up with ideas like that, it is effortless to say, yes, that makes sense. And so and then, yes, all the rest of the ones that Kim listed, I I agree, I think they all make sense. I, yeah, we can talk about the rest. I will, I will say that, you know, when I was thinking about it, like, I haven't served on as many boards as like you you guys have. But the the people that are involved in the boards, they do bring a lot of great information. And but as I was thinking about it, it is very much community engagement and it is opinions. And it's not, you know, and and I I want that, but I think that your ideas for that public engagement for maybe some of the things that we're missing is genius and great. And I would even actually support, and council might not agree with me on this, a counselor being responsible for being there as well. Yeah, you can let chair or alternate for the mayor or something. I don't know.
So let's go around and and finish first responses and then then we'll go back into specifics.
All right. Thank you for the attempt to address this topic. First, I support changing the the issues for the finance advisory boards. I think it makes sense, and I've seen too many discrepancies between finances that were presented to advisory boards and to city councils. So I think that would be very good to change and better focus on that. I'm also open to the potential changes to the planning and design commission, although they have a lot of work. So I would really like to hear from them if they think it is possible, given the amount of data they process. And the community relations commission, I think that was handled very, could have handled, could have been handled better by us as a council. It's obviously in a group of volunteers that has a direct line of communication to council that didn't feel supported by city council. And as a result, most of them resigned. Now, the formation of a regional diversity, inclusion, and belonging council seems to make sense, but it might take a long time. And I believe that CRC needs to be kept alive, active with appointments to show that council is committed to D E I efforts. And that might not be obvious with the way this has evolved in the last six months. An active CRC can be done with the understanding that the CRC would be integrated later, whenever that structure comes in place, if ever, for the regional D A I B.
Can I have a point of clarification? We, the CRC is not dissolved, they resign, we still have a member on the CRC. And can I have a point of clarification that we actually do do D E I efforts with the city of Durango? And because I feel like your accusations are actually not true at all.
So the proposal here is to dissolve the
Absolutely, but currently we have a CRC and you said we dissolved it, we did not.
Did, I mean to say that it is proposed to be dissolved and it's inactive because there's one member and there's zero meetings.
But that's, you're the liaison. I'm saying that, let's be sure that we're making clear.
Very good. I, I think I also support removing a lot of the council liaisons where applicable as a formal position and having that as an optional presence without active involvement. I also support that the chair, my preference would be the chair to write up the minutes of the meetings and not staff. And just to have that objectivity in whatever form that is easiest. I still believe that city councils should continue and conduct the interviews and appointments. And maybe because of the number of councils that should be preferred, we can make that into a two minimum counselor efforts. And then for the Parks, Rec, Multimodal Infrastructure Advisory Board, I will come to that whenever everybody had a chance to discuss the other topics.
Good, Melissa, share your thoughts.
Yeah, I also want to thank you guys so much for taking such a long time and really being very thorough about this analysis. It was really important that you did that. So I also, you know, I recognize that these discussions are not easy, change is hard. You know, we tend to want to resist change, but I also, you know, what was really very helpful for me in evaluating this is already just starting to look at it was looking at your summary of the staff hours involved at fifty-five thousand hours and three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
Fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred, five thousand five hundred, thank you, staff hours and three hundred and thirteen thousand staff equivalent dollars, just for the record. I mean, it's just unbelievable. So for me, that was really important because it just highlights the need. You know, change is inevitable. And when you start seeing numbers like this, you recognize that it it's important because we have to be efficient and we have to be resourceful with our staff time and what's there dollars. And so I really appreciate that. Getting to your proposed structure, I'm happy to have the conversation with you guys about the conversation you want about the boards that you'd like to further discuss. But I I do support what kind of how Kim outlined it, all the steps that she started by outlining. I do support that and I'd like to continue the discussion about the proposed structure that you've recommended even for the other boards. So I'm in support of so far where we're going.
And I will jump in. Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. I will jump in again. Impressive amount of work. And I actually want to say I see it as visionary. You know, you took, you took our mandate, take a clean slate and come back to it. I see the way you've worked on the community engagement being even more inclusive. I see that as, I mean, everybody now has an opportunity to come. It's not like you're going to then steer, we're repeating the process. You come to an advisory board meeting and you get three minutes to talk. Well, now you really, everyone is invited. You can choose to participate. So I see it much more participatory and much more inclusive. I would hope there would be the continued D E I outreach from translation and issues like that that would continue. Again, I I support most everything that you've said. I will comment on the board of ethics. That recommendation did come through to us and they said to separate it. They can handle ethics issues when it comes to staff, that's a city manager or appropriate function. When it comes to council, that's a council function. And that came out of their recommendations to us. So we do need to codify that. I think that you're, you've laid out a transition plan. And particularly, I also appreciate, as Melissa said, the hyper, you know, your commitments to the the values, high performance, customer service, fiscally responsible, and then also inclusive. I am actually pretty supportive of what you're trying to do with the financial advisory board. I think that that's where I think it's a bold move. And so I I recognize you may not have all the answers right now as we come through this. But I am probably as more comfortable than ever in what you've proposed from the iterative process that you've gone through with this. So I also would like to say, I think the timing is essential to get this through. I also believe with the CRC, the response we've had, turning into a community region-wide, the response has been very favorable and recognizing that some of the issues may seem appropriate to one group, but actually they're maybe appropriate to all of us. So I do believe the timing is essential. I'll go back. I'd also like to recognize that we've been discussing boards and commissions actually since 2019 and a restructuring of that. So this has been a process that we recognize, something this big takes a significant amount of time. I'd go back to when councillor Baxter and I interviewed and then when councillor Baxter and councillor Buell reworked the handbook, issues like that. And I'm particularly struck by the the ability to have possibly more meaningful conversations with the community and staff. I think some of those hours saved, you're going to immediately be able to put that into direct contact. And so that is also what makes me feel like we're we're living up to our our expectations of seeking feedback. That's all I have to say.
I I think what I'm hearing is that with the exception of exploring and further detail, not not because of lack of support, but just coming to an understanding, a better understanding of how it all works. The financial advisory board structure and incorporating the other boards, I think we're, I think I'm hearing we're all pretty much like on board with the changes that have come forward. I think that's awesome. And the other change is not necessarily, I mean, there may come something out different out of it, but it's not necessarily the aim. The aim is more to understand how that works and how it actually reflects all the goals that we're looking at. Because this is, that would be, this board is a significant change. And as you said, it is very visionary. So I I just want to have more conversation about that.
I'd also like to add that the, you made the comment about having the liaisons be required. I appreciate you having them be voluntary. I could also see though where some of them may be, may be necessary. And I'd also like to say that I think that in some cases as well, we might need to think, as you think about the reporting relationship in the org chart, right now, all of the advisory boards report to council. And if this is a voluntary role, then it may have a different placement on the org chart. And so you might need to think about that as well. Right now, they fall under, if you think about the org chart, you know, the council is responsible for the three appointees and then we have the advisory boards.
Well, remember how we were having the, at one point, we were having the advisory boards come to us with conversations, not just like the planning commission when we had. But I'm wondering if one way to have that direct line of connection, the way it's visioned, would be to do those quarterly kind of things because there would be, under the structure, there would be less boards to have those conversations with. And so that might be a more effective way of of reporting to council.
I mean, but really, you said that the, there was four that were still going to be mandatory, so there's only two that are mandatory, which is what, airport and?
Let me, let me pull up the
N C Creative Economy Commission, mine, my two boards. I'm kidding, sorry.
So there's six. So the three that are required for one reason or another, of course, would be the mayor's youth advisory commission. And then the two pension board.
And U R A.
And U R A.
So the four, so the only two are airport and a library.
Correct. So they're identified boards in that would have a council liaison, right? So the other ones and and you you guys, I guess, Tori to come up because to help with, if we want to talk more about the financial advisory board too. But anything else really either doesn't have one right now or anything that their recommendations are coming to all of council regardless.
Right. Okay. And so the Creative Economy Commission wouldn't have a council liaison anymore.
Right.
So Tommy doesn't need my help anymore.
I don't think that's
Would you, at this point, and I, thank you councillor Baxter for kind of giving that summary of what you're hearing. Are you prepared to elaborate a little bit more on the financial advisory board at this time?
Well, when we were going through the discussion, we were talking about where some of the overlaps were. And there's definitely overlap with the the sales and use tax funds. So we thought, okay, if we pull that discussion out of these boards and commissions, create our own financial advisory board, they would address them, they could look at it holistically and then take a lot of that overlap discussion out of it, you won't get two different recommendations, et cetera. So that's where the financial advisory board came from. There was still a lot of discussion about, okay, well, what if we have a policy question that comes to us? Great example are e-bikes. Where does that conversation go? So we talked through that process and we kind of landed on, well, we'll have the E L T every other month or quarterly be available so that we could hear those issues and concerns and things like that and have, continue to have that community dialogue. And as city manager, Madrigal suggested, it's a direct-to-direct, you know, communication with city staff. So as far as the financial advisory board, we really talked about, a lot of their work is done in the spring and summer to get ready for the budget season. So maybe during those times, they meet monthly to help with prioritization of projects and and the and and the like. And then in the off season, maybe starting in November, they they meet every other month to really talk about some other things that might be going on. So that was one proposed structure that we looked at in terms of meeting times and things like that. The the directors that were or are mostly involved with those funds would probably be participating on a monthly basis as we're talking about C I P, things like that. And that would be Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Transit, Transportation, et cetera. So we were really thinking the directors would be kind of that liaison, helping answer questions and that word, the priorities and and our communication.
So what I'm hearing is a really cross-function integrated approach is what you're, which is part of your model, how you work, is what you're saying.
Absolutely. I think the the challenge or the challenge that they've grasped on that was a little bit tough was, you know, thinking from a staff perspective, we always want to get it a hundred percent right, right at the beginning and like figure it out. And we, you know, we've taken a step back and said, let's just get there eighty percent. And then we'll figure out as we go through these processes, as we go through updating ordinances, oh, there may be something out there, what happens with this? And then we can find a spot with it as we come back to council, like this is where it goes. So anything trying new, I think, kind of has a little bit of that. We're also not sure on a hundred percent of it. We love the form and the function of it. I think it's it's going to work. But there may be just some tweaks that we end up doing as we go through the process to make sure that we were capturing things that are that are there.
So do you envision for the public engagement? That like, let's say you did, because the e-bike issue did go through both natural lands and parks and rec, I think, a lot, right? They did discuss.
And multimodal.
And multimodal, like all, a lot, which we envision like a public notice, like, hey, we are really looking for, you know, feedback on e-bikes at this coming public engagement meeting, you know, can you please come, give us information, give us, or is that something you guys are kind of thinking of?
It's twofold, I would say, because I think what you have is this community engagement part that you can do it both ways. A, something is coming up, we want to get a lot of feedback, come and, you know, talk to us at the community engagement. The other side of it is also people coming to us. So if we end up getting, you know, one day that everyone's talking about e-bikes and a proposal or a policy, and we have that discussion, then it then can be a cue from us of, hey, okay, there's something out there that we need to delve more into. We obviously report back to the council, said we had fifteen, twenty people show up. They were all concerned about something about e-bike accessibility. So from a staff component, we're going to take a look into it and then we could flush that back out through another engagement meeting and say, okay, we had some time, here's what we want to pass on to you and then bring it up as a policy recommendation to council later. So I I look at that as kind of an influx of where that form can be used both ways. We can use it to specialize and we need information from the community and then also just use it as what's on your mind.
I am. I think the the purpose of a lot of these boards and commissions is to provide a independent line of communication to council. And some of these boards and commissions are made up specifically to represent different groups in our community. And some of them are vocal, some of them have very enthusiastic views on certain topics, but I personally, I highly value all of these volunteers and the feedback they provide to us directly on behalf of the community, because they typically speak on behalf of the community. And it gives us as a council a a separate source for review and recommendations besides what staff tells us. It's like a community control, checks and balances or a pre-screening or prioritization for our community of projects. And I think we as a council must have that. And when we speak of the the ones that are being suggested to be dissolved, Parks, Rec, Multimodal and Infrastructure Advisory Board, I think removing it would significantly reduce community feedback, because they still have the option even now to any community man can go to a council meeting, can go to the boards and commission meeting, and they can send emails. So if you take one out, it will only reduce that feedback, especially if it's something that is important to them to get three minutes during a city council meeting. I think we as counselors do not have that direct feedback anymore. I I I I I'm very concerned about this all.
So I'm going to offer a a counter to to what you just said. You know, because I served on like the multimodal and I know that that has very constituent based, was designed that way. But if you thought about it, you've got the safe routes to school, which has a position on the multimodal. When we meet with nine R on a regular basis, that could be a topic that we're we're doing. So if you think about that, if we, you have a representation of senior citizens and the disabled community. And so you could design it so that you make certain you hear that feedback, whether it's conversations with the county on the senior citizens center or something like that, and that's a topic. So I'm I'm listening to what you're saying, Olivia, but I'm also saying that there might be opportunities through this design to actually have more in-depth engagement around some of those things we've targeted toward people we want to make certainly hear from. And we reach out so that we are talking to the Southwest Center for for independent living, you know, we're as a we're we're engaging them in a purposeful, intentional manner, rather than, you know, one person who may do it. So so I I hear your point, but I also think that this may provide opportunities to be intentional than we have been.
So from the beginning, when we started doing this process of interviewing the boards and talking about this, I've always felt that the dedicated sales taxes, for example, the two thousand five and the two fifteen that are split between three boards, all of which I've either been a liaison and or a member of over the past thirteen years. Yeah. Like the Parks and Rec Board, the Natural Lands Board and the Multimodal Board, it seems crazy to me that they're separate boards. It always has seemed crazy to me because we're talking about the same pool of money and we're trying to do what's right for the community. And so I can easily see a common, a grouping there of those board interests being very, very productive, much more productive than they are now in how monies are allocated. And I think the boards have gotten a little bit too much into, I don't know if operations is the right word, but they've they've kind of digressed into something that they weren't originally designed to do, which is to advise on spending of those specific dedicated tax monies. So I can easily see how combining those boards together and keeping that community interaction would work really, really well as an advisory board to the Financial Advisory Board.
That's a, that's a really good point. I I'm glad, Council Baxter, that you brought it up, because as we look at the form of government and the council's role, which when you look at the advisory board members, is the council role is policy. And sometimes in a lot of those boards, it starts getting more into operations of how something's designed or how this portion of this operation part of, which really doesn't fall in the council's lap, it's in the city manager and staff's lap. And so I think there's a part where you look at efficiencies, making sure that we are playing our roles and that people's time is being used efficiently and effectively.
And then for the Infrastructure Advisory Board aspect of, so it's the twenty nineteen dedicated sales tax and it's the water and sewer enterprise funds that we're talking about. That group of people have to be, in many ways, experienced and educated at a level in that type of work, that infrastructure type of work, that most groups don't, our groups, most of our groups don't have to have that type of ability to have that kind of input. I think that's really important on that group. And one of my concerns is that with a Financial Advisory Board, I think it's really challenging to find people with financial advisory capabilities and infrastructure engineering knowledge. So if you're going to ask a Financial Advisory Board to do the infrastructure knowledge as well as the Parks and Rec, Natural Lands Board, Multimodal and the financial advisors, I think that's going to be incredibly challenging. I think the question becomes what do we want, what what's essential to our community? And then the Financial Advisory Board looks at those and goes, how do we fund them and which can we fund? And then brings that to council. I'm I'm really challenged by the Financial Advisory Board being able to have all those skills necessary to do that full breadth of conversation. But I easily can see how those two groups, the Parks and Rec, Natural Lands Board, Multimodal, those is one, and the I A B is another, could be advisory to the Financial Advisory Board. So the Financial Advisory Board then knows how to look at it financially.
I'm going to just give one example from the I A B. And I thought when I saw your materials that you actually might have some credentials for the people you invite. But I'm going to also offer, and I mentioned this up on the dais. When you're looking at those, this dedicated sales tax, that's why for me, I think it makes sense to have them integrated, including the part, the Public Works. Because in one conversation, we've had it twice. The advisory board said, well, who's going to pay for water and sewer up at me at at Durango Mesa? Is that appropriate for it to come out of the enterprise fund or should that come out of, out of Parks and Rec sales tax? Or who is going to pay to have wider streets on Thirty Second out to two fifty? Should that come from the Streets Two Thousand and Nine Fund or should that come from Parks and Rec, you know, or or something else? So I think the value that you propose of that larger group that says, okay, we've got the full picture can make sense. So I I want to share that.
Maybe the, maybe the chairs and the vice chairs of the I A B and that other combined board sit on the Financial Advisory Board. So that that's how you get that inter-integrated conversation. I don't know, just.
I, so that now we're going from one board to three boards and I just keep going for, yeah, and I just keep going back to the yeah, and then one. So you're going, yeah. And so I just keep, and I keep going back to not just the stats that were here that you mentioned, but also the last time we got presented this, where it listed all the other cities and towns. And they all had like four, five boards and we're still sitting at fifteen boards. And so I'm like, what? Not saying that we're like everyone else or we should be or whatever, but I, there's just something to me. And so I hear what Mayor knows really saying. And also I keep going back to like, what is the Infrastructure Advisory Board? Like what, not operations?
Yeah.
That's not.
You have to be careful that they're not doing.
To do. And I feel like there's been a lot, and I don't sit on the I A B, but I feel like even in the boards I sit on, like, there's a lot that gets into that. And so if we have a bit of word that, you know, is financial minded and then can handle all the other ones, like, I feel like that, I feel like it makes sense. I feel like they can look at all.
Very good. And I'm going to make a discussion about the time.
Yeah, just, I'll read out what the Infrastructure Advisory Board purposes, because I think that needs to be clarified. The is to advise city council on water and wastewater issues and policies such as water supply, conservation, construction and use of transportation and storage facilities, water redundancy, quality drinking water, treated sewer water, water rights, purification, transportation, storage, utilization, improvement, expansion of water systems, including treatment facility. I mean, the list is quite big. That's the first clarification. And the second is a question to clarify. And you mentioned that other cities have four or five boards. Can 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 any of your staff remind me? That seems extremely low. I thought it was fifteen, but I I. We will just pull it up, just to have that very clear that, because here we have legally requirements to have at least.
I I am going to jump in on that definition as the liaison, because we have talked, the the board has talked about how there are some ways the dumping ground, they get everything. And so your point, this is a board that I think has more expertise than in previous years. But I do also want to say, as watching this from my own experience and being on several different boards, it's a very slippery slope between advising and getting into the weeds and the policy. And I so I think you, part of your issue could be resolved when you go back to the, hey, we want to talk about water rates and we're going to have a community meeting about water rates. And then you can get fifteen people with water background or whatever coming out or or seek this. So I I want to address that. I want to ask Jose, we're almost, I can't quite see the time. It looks like we're at quarter up. What do you need from us today? And what is the timeline? If you were going to reach a May, kind of, not everything working, but kind of a May transition or April transition with the election.
What I'm, for sure, I was like, I think from what we're looking from here is just direction to begin proceeding down this path. Once we start doing that, which you'll start seeing at your council meetings coming up or ordinance changes and any other policy changes that need to be done to reflect those changes. So as they come up, we'll be sure to have that in the agenda comment to say this is part of creating this. And then there might, I would suggest there'd probably be some more detailed conversation of like, okay, how did we figure that this works? So that's what we need is just direction for staff to, or or not, direction for or direction not, but to begin proceeding down this path.
All right. I'd like to go around and and get a sense from each counselor what they're thinking as we're providing the direction to the city management.
I support the direction you're going. And I think that, especially with that public engagement process, and if there's a way to capture, you know, everyone that serves on our boards and commissions, but then also a much wider diverse population and get more voices coming to city council, I think, and be more inclusive. Like, I think it could be way better and you would get more input than less input, like some counselors are.
I support the direction it might as well. My reasoning is, you know, that some of the top ones are, you know, to eliminate redundancy. I also really appreciate the fact that the community engagement now could possibly be more inclusive. I like what you were saying, that you think it's visionary, what they're proposing. And starting from a clean slate, if you could, this is what you would do, who supported it. I want to say to you two counselors who came on, gosh, we have been, that would just struck me. We have been talking about this for a very, very, very long time and amazing, actually, that we actually might be taking action.
I know, because it's such a complex issue.
Yes, you know, so I I feel like there's some efficiencies in what you have outlined very much, having one oversight board. And I I think that that would be good, having the directors involved with those funds and with the actively involved, I think it will just be crucial. And I, yeah, I feel like it's a, it's a very good cross-functional and integrated approach, like the mayor said. I think it's, so I really commend you for it. I I support it.
I I I support the financial, well, I'll say what I don't support. I don't support the C R C approach. I think it needs to be kept alive and active up until the point that we have a regional one. And I do not support dissolving altogether the Parks and Rec, Multimodal, National Lands and Infrastructure Advisory Boards. And I think it warrants some further discussion and options, whether it's combining some boards. And I think there is efficiencies to be made, improvements, especially financial. So I think that's where the financial part comes in. Financial board comes in and yeah, I guess that's my.
I love what you guys have done. I really commend everybody, the entire staff. I think it's awesome. My concern comes, there's two areas of concern for me. I want the community to feel hurt and I want us to hear the community. And I'm I'm still not really clear exactly how that's going to work with the currently proposed structure. So for me, I'd like that fleshed out a little bit. The other thing that concerns me is seven members of the Financial Advisory Board who have the skills necessary, because it's not, it's not just evaluating whether or not, how we pay for something or or what we do first. All these things that they'll be talking about are pretty complex. And I don't think it's going to be a quarterly meeting for this group. I think it's going to be at least a monthly meeting. And I maybe more than that, given under certain timeframes. And what is the to be, to be a volunteer at that level with that breadth of responsibility and 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 expertise? I think we're going to be challenged in our little community. I mean, we're, we're, we're a small city now, but I think we're going to be challenged to find people who have the background and the breadth to really do that work and to really delve into it. Not that people don't want to and not that they're not intelligent enough to, but I really think that I'm, that concerns, it just concerns me. So I would be, I mean, I I have, if we can solve or or answer or be sure that those two issues are are addressed, I I'd feel much more comfortable with doing this, this structure. But I I support you going ahead and doing more explanation, exploration into it and how it can be what we think we want it to be and be as effective as it can be. But I I I know how hard it was to find the five salt fab members. You know, and and I know how hard it is to find the, I just, I just know how hard that is to do. And I'm, so that's my concern. I I'm happy to be disabused of that concern. As a matter of fact, I would welcome it. So.
So I will end. And I want to say to both Council Bosmas and to Council Baxter, I've heard your concerns as one counselor. I I want to recognize that in your issues, your suggestions, I actually support in the entirety what you have proposed. And I know you need direction. So what I have heard is that three counselors do support you going forward, recognizing that there are questions.
No, I support. No, I support them going forward. I just said that. That was one of my last things I said. I support them exploring this further. That is exactly what I said.
I guess I was hearing more of the concerns and and maybe not the.
I'd rather you just not speak for me. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Problem. So I think that you have the direction you need. We recognize that there'll be things to be brought up, things to be addressed. And we also, there's some, now more than ever, there's some urgency as well to make this happen, recognizing that it's been a discussion since the autumn of twenty nineteen. On that note, we will start back at five thirty. Sunny Council, thank you.
Thank you all.